We're doing it official. The regular meeting of the Swansea Board of Selectmen for today, August 20th, is called to order. We'll ask Representative Jennifer Rhodes to lead us in the pledge.
...
Thank you, Jennifer. If you want to have a chance to read the minutes, I left my notes at home. There were just a couple of little things I'll let you know. So it was primarily with the non-publics. When we sealed the minutes, there were no seconds noted, so.
Sue, I thought you did a wonderful job. I couldn't find anything and I stayed up all night trying to find something I couldn't.
You can just aspire to these.
That's right.
I made a motion to approve the regular minutes for August 6th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes for all the states.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Are we okay with those questions I have with regard to Dave Marazoff? Just go ahead and approve them and then just get clarification from him afterwards?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All set, Sue? Public input. Who wants to give us some input?
There's gotta be some input out there.
Coming through the door now.
Representative Rhodes, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming.
Jennifer!
Look, you can sit here or sit here.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I would much rather sit here.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's your seat.
Is it okay if I use your seat?
Sure. Thank you, Jennifer.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for having me. For the record, hello, everybody. I am Representative Jennifer Rhodes. I represent Cheshire County District 17. And I represent all of you as the Vice Chairwoman of the House Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. And I don't know, I think we heard over 100 bills maybe in six months' time. So it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. On the printout that you have, I tried to go through and get, you know, what looks to be important, you know, to the towns. And obviously with the beginning of every biennium, we pass a budget, which at least is the goal. It was a little questionable this time, but we did it. And, but with that, you know, you, so your last couple of terms, there was a lot of ARPA money. So there was a lot of money for infrastructure, there was a lot of money for building aid, bridges, you name it. Like, there was money for it, it just seemed like. That money clearly is gone. So this particular budget was tough because there were a lot of decisions that needed to be made that a lot of people didn't like. So if there were positions in a department that had just not been filled for a period of time, they took those positions out of the budget. So, and then of course, you know, there was, there were positions in some departments that unfortunately, you know, were eliminated. I am happy to say that the positions that were, you know, kind of swirling around the Department of Corrections, you know, being in the Criminal Justice Committee, we did not want to see that happen because we knew they would all be coming back because there were going to be problems later. And those positions were all put back in. So we were happy about that. But with that all being said, I do have a little note on here that we won't know the different, the different dollar amounts for the adequacy aid for schools, or actually any of the disbursements for the individual towns as far as funds that were given until September 1st. So we are waiting for the DRA to give us all that information. So basically at the top, I just wanted to highlight a couple of specific things. So you will remember, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that Selectmen Valley was here yet, but I did come to all of you and said, "Listen, I want to put in this bill and I want to try to kind of reform the local welfare law within the state." And just as I suspected, there were some pushback for, you know, for some advocates. And that that was all understood, understandable, I knew that was going to happen, which it did. So I agreed to sit down at a table with all of them before the public hearing and said, "Listen, I am willing to make some of these concessions that you would like. I am here in 100% good faith. And I'm asking you to give me your word that you are doing the same. So if I'm willing to make these changes, which I think are good changes, then are you going to support this new legislation?" Well, the answer was yes and no. We are not necessarily going to support it, but we are not going to oppose it if you are willing to make these changes. Okay? So I went in front of the committee and I explained that the bill that they had in front of them was actually kind of worthless because there was an amendment that was being drafted that was just agreed upon with all the stakeholders that were behind me. And it was just agreed to, so I was going to make this amendment and then the committee would have to introduce it. And at that time, Representative Karazynski worked with me on that amendment because he was in that committee to make sure that everything was a go. Well, unfortunately, some of the people went back on their word within the hour. And instead of saying, "Okay, we don't love this, but we don't oppose it because this is what we asked Representative Do," they said, "Nope, we still don't want it to pass and we oppose it," which I was like, "All right, well now the gloves are off" because I was mad. So anyway, that bill has not yet passed. But because of trying to come up with some agreement that the advocates would at least agree to, instead of passing it just as it was, the chairman decided to retain the bill over the summer. And the goal is to go back when we all meet back, I guess, the beginning of the year, and actually get that bill to actually come to the floor so that we can pass it beginning of the year. So I know that's a long explanation, but one of the things that we did... So originally I had had in there that the towns could vote, right? That the governing body could pick, you know, up to a 90-day timeframe if they wanted a person to be a resident if they were going to seek local welfare. So the understanding was, you know, when this bill was put into effect, which by the way is one of the oldest standing laws in the state of New Hampshire. Like, it has been around since Christ has been a corporal, like, and it has not been touched. It's been touched like twice in all of this time. So one of the things I was trying to say was, "Look, if you want to say 30 days, so be it. But if you want it to be where it's up to 90 days, then so be it." So Todd had said, "Well, you know, everybody is going to pick the 90 days." I'm like, "Then we need to change the law, right? If that's what you're afraid of, then we have a problem, we need to change it." So it turned out that apparently it's unconstitutional to tell somebody that they have to live in a town for X amount of days. So the Supreme Court actually ruled that it doesn't matter if you live in a town for one day or 100 years. You are entitled to the same benefit as everybody else that lives in that town on the first day that you reside there. Okay? So we needed to make that change. So what we did was, we still said that you had to be a resident, but we took out that, you know, up to a 90-day thing. Well, through the course of all this, there have been some articles that have been written, there's, you know, some letters, the editor, and so forth, and a lot of it is very wrong. The latest I read was that, you know, we changed it. The latest was that our neighboring states changed their law that you had to be a resident for like 30 days, therefore people were coming up to our state. That's not true. The, our neighboring states did change their laws, but they didn't put a residence requirement of up to 30 days. They put a cap on their local welfare at 30 days. So if you were in a hotel for 30 days, then that was it. They were saying no more. And that's where the people were coming over to like the bordering towns, you know, especially along the coast in Maine, because Maine's one of the states that did that. And then Massachusetts kind of did something similar, you know, they had their right to shelter law. Sure, we've all heard about it, it put them millions and millions and millions of dollars into debt. So they changed that as well, so now their right to shelter law is a maximum of 30 days. So we're trying to put in, you know, day one, whatever it is, but the selectmen are allowed to say, "Look, you know, this, there's going to be a limit on how much we actually have to give." But we put in there a limit, so you know, you can't just say, "Oh, it's a dollar," right? So there's a lot there, but at the end of the day, it hasn't, it's just kind of waiting and we have to wait to go back. So not giving up on that because I really think that that is something that has to happen for everybody all the way around. The other bill that I actually...
On that, Jennifer, has there been cooperation with regard to mental health and helping people find the services they need?
So every, as you know, pretty, I don't know of a single county that doesn't have some kind of, you know, cap services. And we did put in there, you know, if you have, there's always extenuating circumstances, right? Especially surrounding, you know, domestic violence, a woman that finds herself in, you know, fleeing from a bad situation. So we put those exceptions in there, right? And that was one of the concessions that I was happy to make, but I didn't know how to word it. So that's why I actually sat down with the advocates to make sure it was worded properly. So, and at the end of the day, like the, you know, the mental health term is very difficult because now you're getting into, who am I to say whether or not, you know, this person, this person's experienced a mental health crisis? So we put in there that the selectmen could let their welfare officer, the welfare director, whatever their title may be, what exceptions that they, the governing body, want that particular officer to make. So, and if you, the other thing that we put in there too, is this is all up to the towns. If you don't want to change anything and you want to leave it exactly like it is, do that. Do that. We, so nothing says must. Everything was that the town may. So if the, if the selectmen or, I mean, what do they call them in city councilors, I think, or aldermen, they actually have the right to sit down and come up with, come up with their own rules to what is best for their local town or their city. Whereas it is now, it says that you're allowed to do that, but there's all these exceptions that you're not allowed to adjust. One of them being whether or not a person actually lives in the town or not. So we have to wait. We have to wait till we go back. House Bill 559 was a bill that I brought forward because one of my, one of my fire chiefs in my towns came to me and said, "Listen, during COVID, we were allowed to have one driver of an EMS and one caregiver, right? So if you go to a scene and it's obvious that, you know, it, maybe it still was an emergency, but it's not life-threatening and one person could drive the vehicle, one person could just, you know, work on the particular patient, that that was going to be okay." So during COVID, the governor actually signed like an executive order that halted the rule that says that you have to have, everybody in the vehicle has to be basically an EMS provider. So we tried to just make it be one driver and one giver, like one caregiver. And we were able to get it through the House, but we were not able to get that through the Senate. And, you know, my argument was, "Listen, if it was okay during COVID, either lives were worth more than, and you wanted to get people to the hospital quicker, or they were worth less than, and it was okay to only have one and one. Either way, something's wrong here, right? Either way, this doesn't add up." We were, we just, we weren't able to get it through the Senate, so it died like a hot potato and I tried. The other thing that doesn't really pertain, you know, pertain to Swansea, but, you know, we had the two floods back to back, as you guys know, right? Then because of that, it didn't take long, but the Forest Lake Dam in Winchester on Route 10 finally breached and it was quite literally a disaster. So for a couple of years leading up to that breach, there was a Forest Dam Association and they single-handedly raised over $800,000 to repair this dam. They didn't get any, any funding from the state despite our repeat requests. They didn't get any money from federal delegation despite our repeat request. They did get some money from the voters of the town per warrant articles, but again, they raised that money. So after it was fixed, the state would not, would not, like, would not replenish the fish. I'm like, "Really? They put $800,000 of their own money into this dam and you're not going to give us fish? Are you out of your minds?" Yep, they're out of their minds. So I was told, "Sorry, there's just not enough fish. You can't have any fish. It is now restocked with trout, so please go fishing." And another thing that I'm working on is apparently there has been a road that has been closed that people have been using forever and a day to go hunting, and they closed the road. So now you have people that, you know, once you get to a certain point, you have to stop your ATV, you can't go any further. So if you are fortunate enough that you actually are able to get a deer, you know, you can only, you know, drag it for a mile before it becomes no good, well now you have another mile to get to your ATV because of the way they close off this road. So I'm in the process of trying to find out why that road was closed and if they can reopen the road. But one thing that, that just amazes me is, New Hampshire's this really small state and everybody says, "We don't want any, we want a little, little bit of government, like, leave us alone." Holy crap, do we have a ton of government in the state of New Hampshire! I've had to make, so far I've talked to the Colonel of Fishing Game, I talked to the Lieutenant for, like, for this region, I talked to another officer, and I still have not gotten to the person that I need to get to to find out why this road is closed. So now I'm told to talk to the Trails Bureau. Okay, well, that's a whole different department of Fishing Game, that's part of the Parks and Recreation. Unbelievable. So I don't know that that's going to happen anytime soon, but, you know, we're, we're working on that.
Where's the road?
It is, it is back up in Pisgah. And I believe it touches parts of, like, Winchester and Ash Willet and Chesterfield. But I can't remember the name of the road. I don't, I don't, almost don't want to remember the name of it because I don't want to draw more attention to it than it's already there because it's, it is just ridiculous. Okay, so in, in the budget, you know, there was, whether you liked the idea or not, apparently I was on the wrong side of this, I didn't love the idea of getting rid of the car inspections. I kind of thought it was a good idea to have them because I used to live in Pennsylvania and West Virginia and Ohio did not have them. And let me tell you, it was really interesting to try to park your car in a parking lot, right? And I was petrified of that happening, but here we are. So in the budget, you know, they got rid of the car inspections. So that's going to take effect, I think, next January. But the thing to remember that I keep on telling people is, you know, you can still get your car inspected if you want to, right? You can still take it to garage, you can still have a safety inspection done if you choose. But just because they got rid of the car inspections does not mean that your car does not have to be safe and roadworthy. So in the event that you were to get pulled over, the officer absolutely can, and I'm told that they plan on writing citations if your car is, you know, not up to par like it should be to be on the road. So there's that.
What were some of the major decisions against that? Like, what do they feel, like, what do you feel that you're not far about? What's your biggest thing?
About the car inspections?
Yeah, to get rid of that.
Quite, you know, I don't like to drive down the road and see somebody's car, you know, attached with duct tape or a bungee cord. I just don't. I, I, I think it's, I don't think it's safe for anybody in that particular, in that particular situation. And, you know, again, I'm on the Criminal Justice Committee, right? There's not a single officer that I've talked to that said, "Yeah, I think it's a great idea, let's get rid of it." Right? And they don't, they, they don't like the idea of, they say it's there for a reason and it's a safety thing.
On the other side of the coin, is, is it true that some of the things they looked at were people getting ripped off by going to garages and the garage saying that they need stuff and they don't know and stuff like that? I heard that was some of the argument.
Yes.
And some of the argument was like, a guy that buys a brand-new car, why do you really need to have him inspected?
Right.
Why are you spending money when you have a brand-new vehicle right out of the lot?
Right.
Right?
Right. So on, on that Selectment debate, I will tell you, I am very, very fortunate that I married a car guy. And everybody thinks that I became a car person because I married him and I'm, I'm pretty sure that I married him because I already was the car person, right? So I have never in my life paid for a car repair, ever. I have a brand-new vehicle that is sitting in my driveway right now with a blown motor. No joke, six months old. And my husband found a motor because they won't, they won't honor the warranty. He found a motor, he paid to have it shipped to our house, and he is right now in the process of replacing that motor.
So you were saying, could new cars give you problems?
Oh, yeah, but that had nothing to do with the inspection. So what I'm getting at is, the horror stories that we've heard about people getting ripped off or it being a scam, I am fortunate enough that that has never happened to me. But that does not mean that I haven't heard the pleas of other people saying that it has happened. And I don't have any reason to not believe those people when they say that it has happened. But I will tell you that my car right now has a check engine light that comes on and we are like, it's like playing whack-a-mole. It goes off for two days and then I'm like, "Okay, I need to drive it, get the miles on it," right? And then it comes back on and it comes back on. I don't know what the problem is with it, but I can tell you, I'm driving that car and there doesn't seem to be anything wrong with it. So, but that's a problem, right? If your check engine light is on, you can't get your car inspected. So if you do have a person that's on a, you know, very limited income and, okay, so yeah, the inspection sticker is not going to change their lifestyle, but if they're told that they have to put hundreds of dollars into the car to get that inspection sticker, now that's a whole, that's a whole nother story. There was the story that everybody was, that was going around, I don't know, they, they got their car up on a lift to do the inspection, said that it needed to have these repairs, but then they wouldn't bring it back down until those repairs were done. So they weren't able to ever get their car back. I mean, to me, that's just straight-up theft. But then that person has to hire an attorney, right? People can't, people just can't afford that. So at the end of the day, I don't really know that there's a right or a wrong. I do know that we don't have it anymore. And, you know, you're either, you're either really, really happy about it or you're not. And it just, you know, it is what it is. But I will say, for every single car dealer, right, to say how we have to have it, I will say this. We tried working with the Auto Dealers Association since I've, this is my third term, and this is something that's been coming up every single time, every single biennium. So last year we actually passed that you could not fail a vehicle because of ugly rust. You want to drive your car because it has ugly rust, so be it. As long as it's not a safety thing, drive your car with ugly rust. But garages were still failing vehicles because of ugly rust. Just because you have rust on your tailgate doesn't mean that that Just because you have rust on your tailgate doesn't mean that that car's not safe to drive, right? So, so what we did this time is we went for the full monty and said, "Fine, we're going to replace, we're just going to repeal the whole thing," because we tried to do that every two years. We tried to do if it had under a certain amount of miles. No matter what we did, we couldn't get past. It was kind of like the welfare thing. No matter what you tried to compromise with, it was never enough. So anyway, we passed the ugly rust thing, thought that would at least be something, and then we found out that they were still failing them anyway, so we said, "Fine, have it your way." We went for the whole monty, didn't think that the Senate would ever go for it. And it turns out that the Senate President had a situation with her side-view mirror. And because of her side-view mirror and some electrical wire, she couldn't get her car inspected. And she said, "I want to get rid of the car inspections." So anybody that wanted to get rid of it, you can thank her for having trouble with that side-view mirror because that was the, I heard her saying that in the governor's office. So, um, so it's gone. You like it or not, it's gone. Um, the, they also put in the budget the, the bell-to-bell cellphone ban, right? You know, so kids aren't on their phones while they're actually in school. Doesn't mean that you can't be, you know, come to school with it in the morning. Doesn't mean you can't walk away with it. It's just while you're in classrooms, you can't be on your phone. Um, and there's a lot of other stuff that is in that budget. It is, as you guys all know, it's about that thick. Um, I'm not reading it. Um, but the big thing that we did get put in there, and this is why the budget was, why it was getting really, really ugly, there was a whole group of us that stood up and said, "We're not passing it. We're not passing this budget," and it got really ugly. It was the fight over the first responders and their retirement to fix that. So quite literally eleventh hour, um, we were voting on the budget on Thursday. I think it was about seven-twenty, maybe seven-thirty at night. Uh, the governor called me and said that they were able to work it out and asked me to support the way it was, that all the first responders were okay with it. So we all said, "Okay," right? Because that's what we were holding out for. So they, they seem to be at least better off now than they were before that whole thing started. Um, all right, so this is one that you're either going to love or you're going to hate. You guys probably not going to like it. Um, so there is now procedures for a town, the town body, um, to adopt a tax cap if they want to. But with that, they also put in requirements so that it's in writing to get rid of the tax cap if you want to get rid of it. Again, you either love it or you hate it, but there it is. Um, and they also, um, put where, if there's going to be a, like, a tax that be raised, now you have to put what that is actually going to be beside it. So when your budget committee meets, you know, if it's going to raise your taxes seven percent, ten percent, they have to put that now on your warrant article or on your actual ballot. Ballots are going to get long. They're going to get really long. Um, and with that, they also made, so for cooperative school districts, your, your appointed member to the budget committee doesn't get to vote on the actual budget committee. So if they're voting on the budget itself, as they're sitting at the school board, then when they go to the, to the budget committee meetings, they're there to give information on why they either did or did not support a particular warrant article. They don't get to vote again. One person, one vote. Um, so, uh, another big thing is House Bill one-sixty-five. So again, you know, we had the two years of that horrible disaster. You know, Mr. Krebs' yard saws a crater in it that looks like an asteroid hit his yard, and the state finally came down, took a look at it, and said it's going to cost, they said it was going to cost over half a million dollars just for the plans to come up with how to fix this crater in this man's yard, right? So we were trying to make it a little bit easier to get funding now instead of waiting for, waiting for the governor to get a hold of, you know, the feds and say, "Hey, we need to declare natural emergency," and then you have to wait for Homeland Security to say how much money you're going to get. It's a mess. It's a mess. In the meantime, Acworth still doesn't have their roads rebuilt because they don't have the money. They don't have the money to rebuild it. So farmers are like done because nobody can get in or out of these roads. So HB one-sixty-five is increasing the maximum annual amount of disaster relief funding for municipalities, and I just put in there kind of the wording for that, just to kind of take a look at that, which is going to be very, very helpful to small towns. I know you guys didn't seem to have too much trouble when, you know, you guys, like, when Swansea got hit, it got hit, and it was unfortunate, but it kind of took care of itself in a reasonable amount of time. But, you know, Winchester's dam broke, right? And then the, all of Route ten, which fortunately for Winchester was a state road, but if you remember last summer, that, that whole road collapsed. Like, we had no infrastructure, and it, I mean, they got on it quick, but that was only because it was a state road. So if that was a town-owned road, we'd have been in trouble. We'd have been in real trouble. So, um, that is going to put the money back to what it was before the money was taken away. Um, HB five-seven-seven is allowing for people to be able to construct, um, accessory dwelling units by right. And HB four-sixty-seven, um, let me see... Oh, that is allowing for towns to vote to allow social districts. So if you, you know, have a main street and you want to be able to have, you know, alcohol sitting outside, they put in the stipulations in order to make that happen. So, I mean, it's all, it's all very, very much spelled out of exactly how it has to be. Same with the tax cap. Like, if you guys, for the tax cap, if you went on to that actual bill, which the bill numbers are here, it tells you exactly how the warrant article has to read to put it into effect and exactly how it has to read to take it away. Um, and they also are allowing for the, you know, like, if you have a hair salon or a barber shop, apparently people go there and want to drink wine. I, I don't think that I want to do that when I'm getting my haircut. I'd like to see what I'm looking at, but, you know, I guess people do that. So, but again, it's very specific. You know, your, you know, your, your police chief has to go look at it. Your health inspector has to go. It's like a whole procedure to do it. So if people want to do that, I, they've put in, they've put in an avenue to be able to make that happen now. Um, and then HB one-fifty, this really wasn't that big of a deal, but apparently if you had, like, a homestead license, you know, when you wanted to, you know, sell pickles out of a jar, you, you were only allowed to be able to use, like, residential equipment to do that. But if you just happened to have, like, a really big commercial-sized stove, like, I guess if you just bake a lot, you weren't allowed to use your commercial-sized stove. It was considered not to, not to count for the homestead thing. So they amended that. So again, I, I, I can't believe we had to argue over this stuff, but that was a thing, apparently, that we needed to fix that, so we did. Um, so again, not everybody loves these things, but here we are. So Senate Bill two-ninety-five is now signed into law where we have the universal EFA program. So go to the school that's, you know, best for that child. Um, HB ten was the parental bill of rights. HB ninety-seven allows for the intra-dist, intra-district transfer of a student within a school. So, you know, if you have two elementary schools and this particular school's not working for you, they put a mechanism in for you to be able to go to the other school. But with that, they actually put, so that, you know, you don't want to have your kid have a student leave. That is an accounting nightmare. I know this because I used to work in the SAU. So they, everything that is passed, that is confusing when you look at it and you think it's going to be a nightmare, they do have stipulations where it's not going to be like, "Oh, my gosh, now what are we supposed to do?" They have it all worked out in the formula so that the money would still stay, and then it wouldn't be to, like, the following year. It's kind of just like if you have a kid that's out of district and they move in the middle of the school year, that all kind of gets washed out at the end of the year. So it's going to kind of be that kind of same process.
Jennifer, could I interject?
Yes, sir.
We, we, we were hopeful of maybe half an hour with you.
Am I, am I already over?
Oh, don't even think about it.
Oh, okay.
We have a couple of questions for you.
Well, that is good because you guys can just use your packet.
That would be great.
Okay.
So we have our, our town planner, Adam Pocat, who's here, who, uh, we had some concerns with regard to the, uh, some of the land use legislation that came through, uh, that takes away local control, and he'd like to address you with some of those. He, he did draft a letter along with Lori Rodeola, our town administrator, to the governor. Uh, and then when they're finished with that, we'd like to talk about HB three-seventy-three for something for you to look at next year.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Adam, it's nice to meet you. Um, so what Bill was referring to, and I, I just wanted to read the letter that I drafted in regards to specifically HB four-fifty-seven, uh, relative to zoning restrictions on dwelling units, and HB six-three-one permitting residential building, commercial zoning. Uh, but this really is more broadly associated with zoning changes directed from the state. And, um, planners from around the state feel pretty similar to how I feel and how the town of Swansea feels. I've been talking to some of my colleagues in different municipalities, and we all are kind of on the same page. There are obviously some differing opinions, but, um, the gist of it is, uh, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but...
Clearly, I took way too much and I was supposed to, so...
I, I, I think the, the main takeaway is that any zoning change brought down from the state, it's, it's, it's too, it's too broad. It's, it's too much of an umbrella fix, and it doesn't necessarily, uh, tailor to each individual municipality. And I think the concern from Swansea is that these changes, they, they don't really take into, uh, account our character, our, our population. We have a member of our planning board here tonight. Uh, they don't take into account our, our local planning board officials, zoning board officials. And I, I think we're just a bit concerned that these changes are going to be coming more frequently every year when, in reality, they should be coming from the town itself and not from the state. Um, I don't know if you have any comments related to that or if you've heard from different planners from around the state and how they're feeling, but, um, you know, part of my job is working with our local planning board and coming up with, uh, amendments to our zoning ordinance that work for the, for the town. Um, so it, it feels kind of like the state is taking away that part of my job and why I was hired in the first place. So I'm not sure if you have any thoughts or feelings on that.
Well, I will tell you that, um, well, I wrote down these numbers, and I will have to have you tell me a little bit what they do because I don't, I just don't know them all, but, um, on that, I can tell you, I don't think there was a single zoning bill that I voted in support of. And towards the, towards the end of the term, when they were, you know, kind of coming at us like rapid fire, there was, there was a really strong group of people. I think there was about forty or fifty of us, if I'm not mistaken, that said, "No. No, no. No, no, no." And there were a lot of bills that were coming out of the committee with, you know, unanimous recommendations that we were taking off the consent calendar and we were killing them on the floor. So not only were we overturning the committee, but we were getting them killed altogether. There was one, and I can't remember the bill number, that it passed. I think it, I think it passed, and then we said, "Oh, my God, like, no." Like, it was total panic. We got a reconsider motion, and then we were able to kill it by one. So that was, like, you know, dancing in our seat kind of a thing. But then there was another one that passed by one. So that went to the Senate. We were kind of hoping it wouldn't get any further. And unfortunately, it actually got signed. It got signed. But there was another one that we kind of did the same thing. We thought we were going to kill it, then it went to committee of conference. So, you know, we're all thrown up over it, and I don't remember what all these did, but they all kind of did the same thing, right? Um, so went to committee of conference, and it didn't look like it was going to pass because, like, they were, like, okay, the House wasn't going to budge. Anyway, the Senate said, "No, we'll give you what you want." And we were like, "No! Oh, my gosh!" So then what happened was they just didn't sign the report. So that's how we killed that one. I mean, it was, it was crafty, but we did it. We killed it. So, and, and one of them had something to do with, you know, like, a buffer zone that you could do anything you wanted within this zone, regardless of the size of your town. Like, it was a disaster, and that was the one I think that we killed by one vote. Um, and then I think the commercial zoning one might be the one that it, it basically said that you could put residential and commercial zones. And, uh, again, what it would be doing, like, what are we doing here? And then the more I looked into that, not that I agree with it, but I think the reasoning for that would be, is if you had, like, an old school that's been sitting empty to make it easier for a developer to make them do apartments, if that's what they wanted to do.
Quite frankly.
Is that the same one? Is that six-thirty-one, I think?
Um, I'll have to look at my paper. But I, I think, I, I agree. I, I mean, I agree with a lot of these changes. I just disagree with the way they're being done. And, you know, even if I agree with the changes, just, um, you know, on a broader stage, you know, I, I agree with a lot of these changes. I just, I really just don't like the way they're being done uh, because it doesn't give the people of Swansea a, a chance to vote, voice their opinions. Um, you know, we're, you know, our planning board, they're, they're a small board. I'm one person. I have a, an assistant town planner at town hall. And, you know, we can only do so much work. We really rely on citizens of Swansea to make their voices heard and how they feel about these changes. So if I agree on something, it doesn't, you know, it, it adds some weight, but it doesn't really matter in the grand scheme of things because I really want to hear from Swansea, and I want to hear what Swansea thinks about these changes. So I'm, I'm just a bit disappointed that they weren't given the chance to voice their concerns. And I know, and it sounds like you're, you're echoing that. Um, so I appreciate you listening.
Certainly, certainly.
You guys want to add?
Anybody have any questions of Representative Rhodes?
Thank you.
Jennifer, I, I misspoke with the, with the title. I'm going to have to send you an email with, with the RSA. But what I, what I wanted, what the board wanted to bring to your attention is that as a municipality, by statute, we're only permitted to lease municipal property to a third party for a year, uh, and then it would need to be renewed. Uh, we do have the option to go to the body to ask for an opportunity to increase it to five years.
Up to ninety-nine, I think.
No. Uh, well, it was all unclear as to whether we could. It seemed like it was fixed at five, which we, we intend to do. But the question is, why is it that the state is, is enabled to lease to third parties for longer than a year, but municipalities are not?
I do not know the answer to that, but I will tell you. Um, on the way over here, I spoke with the prime sponsor of that bill. And so she told me if you go to, it's RSA one-two-seven, um, some number one, that in that it gives you the breakdown of, so she said it's kind of like a checklist. Like, if this happens, then this, this is how this happens, or this, or this. So it's not just like all of the above. So, because my concern was, is, wait a minute. You, you know what? If you don't have a town meeting for nine months and, you know, they want something with this vacant piece of property. So that's where she was saying it's up to a year. And then if you wanted to go over a year, then there's, then there's five years, but it does, it does certainly go up to ninety-nine years. Because I, I looked at it specifically because I, I remember you and I had had a conversation about that once before. Um, so I don't know if that makes it easier for you, but she said part of the confusion is because you have to look at the actual final chapter version, which has all the amendments and everything now added to it, all as one large bill. So what people are looking at was, you know, just the original bill and then an amended version. So if you go on the website, unfortunately, they finally made one page of every single bill that passed. So you have to, when you click on it, like, you have to actually click on the left-hand side. It's like a number, like, you know, number fourteen is an example. When you click on that, then the bill comes up. You have to click again on where it says "chapter version," and then that's where it'll come up, every single thing. But she told me to have you specifically look at the RSA one-two-seven-one because it'll give you exactly how it has to break down and work.
Okay, thank you.
It's one-two-seven-one. Got it. Okay?
Yep.
Okay?
Anyone else? Just touching on what Adam brought up. When, when the legislation comes down and takes a town like Swansea, which has been very proactive with regard to housing, um, and, and puts that burden on, will there be funding from the state that will help us with infrastructure improvements, sewer, water, roads? Uh, or is it just simply going to be dogmatic, this is what you need to do?
I think the unfortunate answer is probably going to be, it's going to be, this is what you need to do. Um, so I will tell you, without trying to take up too much time, there was, there was a bill that was going to say, "Hey, listen, you know, right now, a lot of towns have an ordinance where you have to have, you know, two parking spaces for each apartment." And they were trying to make that be one. And, you know, Representative got up there and tried to make the argument and said, "Well, you know, this is archaic because, you know, most people only have one car." And I'm thinking, "I have four alone. Like, who only ha-" That doesn't make any sense to me. I, I can't think of a single family that I know that only has one car. Again, I'm a car person. I get that. Um, and I thought that was the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, that, that, how that that was archaic. I'm thinking, if anything, you probably should have it to be two or three. So anyway, there was a bill that they said, "Hey, listen, if you have a main street that you have to allow at least the second floor or above to be apartments if they're not rented out to a business." Okay, well, all, all right, maybe I can get behind that. That'll, you know, help with this issue. But then they turned around and said, "Well, but we're only going to make them have to have..." But then they turned around and said, well, but we're only going to make them have to have one parking spot. So now where are the people supposed to park it if they're, if they're there for that business? Where are they, where are they supposed to park, right? So it just seems like for, you know, every tit, there's a tat, like, what, what are we doing, what are, what are we doing here? I, I do not like them. I personally, my daughter's twenty nine years old, uh, she has no prayer, she has no prayer to buy a house, right? My first house was fifty three thousand dollars, that same house I looked, i- it's like three hundred and twenty grand, right? People don't want to live in a block building their entire lives. So this plan of build apartments, build units, build apartments, build units, is not going to help anybody. You're going to get stuck in rental entrapment, that's it, right? In a perfect world, I would love to see what they did like after World War Two, right? Where the government did step in and then they had these massive tracts of land and they said, look, developer, we, the government, are going to give you loans, they're going to be so minute as far as interest rate and then going to get the supplies for super low interest rate, but then in return, you have to sell it, right? You're building starter homes, right? That was it, these people coming from war, they needed a place to live. Those exact houses are being sold time and time and time, they just keep on, they just keep on going over and over. It's a single-family person that's buying it, it's an elderly person that's buying it, they sold their big house, they're, they're downsizing. I don't agree with this whole build block buildings everywhere, but that's my personal opinion. So, we're trying, we're trying.
Appreciate it.
Wish me luck.
You got it.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I don't want to be rude, but I'm going to go uh to my next town, so please call me.
We appreciate you coming.
Anytime, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks.
See you sometime. Town forester Jeremy. Jeremy Turner, it's a pleasure to have you. I don't know that we've had the pleasure, but.
Well, here we are.
Yes.
Yeah. Some new faces here. Yeah. Thanks for the invitation.
We appreciate it.
To catch up, we can talk some.
Tell us a little bit about what you're doing for the town and then more specifically about the Tracy lot.
Yeah, yes, um, I don't know how long, it's been quite a, quite a while I've been helping the town out with, with all forest management concerning the town forests, mainly uh Crescent Mountain more recently, where we've developed a forestry uh planning document, science-based practices and implemented fair amount of operation treatments on that project over the course of the past few years. Um, we're helping right now with rehabbing some of the recreational trails that uh provide the public, the hiking experience up to the height of land, at Mount Crescent Height of Land. Um, that's ongoing through, through August, or through autumn. And that's kind of the current activity currently. And yeah, and then you folks, Joe asked me, is Joe here?
He was unable to attend, but.
Yeah, so he, he, he reached out and asked if I could take a look at the Causeway Lane property, Tracy Lot and, and uh so he took a look at that project, uh, or that property and gave him sort of my feedback of what I saw from that site evaluation last month. And so, given that, he suggested I come and meet, he looped in Lori, Lori, are you Lori? Yeah, okay, looped in Lori and then invited me to sit here and meet up with you folks.
Could you share with us your report on the Tracy lot?
Yeah, uh, it, it's quite terse, it, you know, I basically um went there and looked from the lens of a um forester for, from a standpoint of, of forestry management, not, not really knowing what your objectives are. I was just asked to go take a look at it and give my feedback on if there's a viable operation um project. And so, looking that over, it's, you know, it, it's about thirty, almost thirty eight acres and the bulk of the property um is wetland along the Ashville South Branch. But there's, there's a significant upland, high, well-drained esker, sandy site that's uh suitable for forestry um operations, if that's what you folks are looking to do. Uh, I think.
Pine trees?
Excuse me?
Are they pine?
Yeah, yeah, it's a pine, it's a white pine forest community up there, really well-drained and uh couple age systems, it, the, 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 the forest itself is, I'd say, it's nineteen thirty eight hurricane kind of erogony there, or is farming that was let go and, you know, before the Second World War. So, so there's, there's a significant amount of very large trees that you can easily argue are, are very mature to past mature in terms of economics. And so that's, that's the overstory and then there's an understory, which is another age class, younger, maybe five to ten, fifteen years old, that's underneath that, that's doing its thing, getting ready for the, the older folks to go away, however, we choose for them to go.
To let them go away?
Yeah.
I got it.
So, so it's a pine system, there's some oak, uh, northern red oak scattered around, but it's mainly.
It's not a lot of oak, but it's ma- mainly pine.
Mainly white pine, yep, that's right. Yeah, so, so yeah, from a, you know, th- there's, there's all kinds of lenses, you can look at it from, from a habitat standpoint, you know, that clearly, there's a, a lot of opportunities to be creative out there and do some forestry to enhance. Biodiversity, which at this point, you know, it's a, it's a single-aged stand, it's pretty simple, it's not a lot of complexity in it, so operations can allow you to do creative things that, that uh allow more diversified uh use, songbirds, mammals, reptiles, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's a, that's the science behind it. But I, I, I'm not sure what, what the goal is of the town, so I can't really speak to, like, the.
How would you manage it?
How would I personally manage it? I would personally, um, so the bulk, it's not a big area, it's, it's eight to twelve acres of commercial forest land. So it's, it's kind of right on the, the edge of being a real viable operation. I think it is, because it's, it hasn't been, it hasn't been harvested at all in eighty, ninety years. So, um, so, because if it's an even-aged stand and very large timber, you know, the utilitarian in me would be like, well, I'd probably, I'd probably, I'd probably operate and harvest the merchantable timber off from it.
Is it fair to say that some of that is getting to the point where it's not, it loses its value?
Yeah, that, tha- that was, that's the point I was making earlier, is that from an economics standpoint, that the maturity of the pine is, is at an age where it's sinessing, which means it's just, it's, it's old and it's not really responding to the light and space that's there, it's big and it's slowing down. And because it's slowing down from a health standpoint, there's, there's decay that starts to occur, there's stressors that occur when you get, when, if you're a tree and you get older, you start to lose your vigor and your ability to be robust and fight off problems. So those trees are in that state. And so, yes, clearly, the majority of the, the trees there are at a point where they're going or some of them have gone away. It's an even-aged stand, so they're all, they're all sort of looping into that condition. It's not like you got some nice ones that are really younger and vibrant and robust and you can take care of those and thin them, it's more even-aged, so most trees are showing that, that over maturity issue. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Sometimes I get into tree time and tree world and people don't really follow me sometimes, but I'm trying to make that clear.
So would your, would your process be to vet potential loggers to take care of that, or is that a company that you work with?
No, uh, that's, I'm basically your agent, your advocate. You give me some marching orders of what your, you as a town have for a goal for that property, long-term. And then I will, I will put together some options that can get us there. And then, once we choose what options you want, then, then I can decide what the best contractors, contractors would be with the right tools, the right equipment, the right skill set, the right reputation, the right, all the right stuff that you want somebody to be there representing the project we're taking care of. So I would, I'd navigate all that through, you know, the public bidding process and then come with you, come to you with what my findings are and then we can decide who we'd want to go through based on the value given. Some towns, I work for a lot of towns, some towns the value is just dollars, some towns the value base is a lot more than that, it's their, their reputation, their, their, you know, what they've done in the past for other towns, you know, their safety, their, their equipment, blah, blah, blah. There's a lot of different ways you can value the bid awarding. So I can help navigate to get all to that point, we'll award the bid. Um, I put together all the agreements and uh make sure everything's appropriate for engaging with business on that type of service. And then they follow through, I make sure they're compliant, supervise, I watch all that, I can't handle all the accounting and the paperwork and basically from A to Z, I take care of that whole process and um help navigate, you know, neighbors, public integration and such, if that happens, just because I'm on the ground, I'm in the neighborhood, and uh try to make it as smooth as an experience and a good experience for you and the people of the town.
Sure.
So, yeah.
We had an experience with Mount Caesar a few years ago with regard to the slash that was left, so.
I think that's why I was hired.
You're correct.
There was a bad experience, yes.
So is, is that something that's just a given, that that'll be taken care of as part of the RFP process?
Yeah, I, I think that, that particular project, you know, being quite um visible and in a neighborhood, we'd want to make sure that uh, that slash especially was not, you know, remaining. There's certain systems, methods, cutting machines that leave a lot of slash and there's others that do not. So I would think we'd want to choose the appropriate system that probably would chip all the residues. So there's not that slash residue issue, um, if that's what you're regarding, yeah.
Is there a fire issue with that? That's come up a few times, given all the fire, fires up north.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, there's always risk of, of uh, of ignition, you know, and fuels, so branches, limbs.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah.
By not managing it, does it, the forest, does it lead to the potential for a significant fire or leaving the slash whatever behind?
Sure, yeah, so the, the, a- as it stands, as it, as, as that forest, forest that I was evaluating stands, you know, it's, there's a lot of fuel, so fuel is heavy fuel, trees, light fuels, branches, limbs, leaves and fuel accumulations of light fuel. So if it's very dry and somebody was out there today, not with the rain now, but at a, at a dry day, when there's a high ignition, that system would burn, I don't know how hot, but it's certainly a drier, droughtier site. It's on sand, it's, it's pine, pine typically with dead wood, fuel wood and light fuels can be ignition and it could burn, yeah, for sure.
The, the other thirty acres?
Yeah, the other thirty acre.
Twenty-five, whatever.
Yeah, the other thirty acres is, you know, it's, it's a, it's all riparian, which is wet, edge forests, wet, uh, forested wetlands along the Ashville, it's lowland flood zones. So um, there's, there's nothing commercial about that, nor would we want to do anything down there ecologically, it's pretty important.
It's good the way it is.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Anybody have any questions? Jay?
Um, Turner, we, we did the Crescent, not all of the Crescent.
Yeah, Jay.
We worked with you to do the Crescent forestry.
Yeah, right, that's right.
We had that one presentation where we invited people to see the results of it. And we talked about the slash files and how they helped increase the diversity of wildlife, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, on the forest regeneration after the dump. That, of course, was, was spot, this is spot clear, we did a clear, whole nature, maybe talking about. And we talked about this, well, maybe it was a spot cleared or being cleared.
Yeah, so I think, I think it would be, um, I think there should, there should be a few options. So one, one would be an even age cutting, which would be a pretty, basically a removal of the overstory. And then that would allow that response of all the, the young forests that's coming in. It's such a small area that, um, to go in and do light work and knowing a lot of that work here, quote unquote, thinning is about fifty years too late. So, you know, I don't know if that would be, you know, a really logical way to, to try to tend that stand.
Yeah.
It's, like I said, it's a, it's an old, older, mature, even age system of a small acreage. So I think probably an even age cut, which would be.
Yeah, pretty much all big trees.
Yeah.
And, and that would allow the forest to recover and grow, grow fruit. Which much wanna do is increase productivity here so that it's gonna produce, uh, produce plant. But some of those trees are probably older than they look and some of the smaller ones.
Yeah, sure, yep. Yeah, a lot of the, these trees are eighty also or ninety and a lot of those are dead. Cause they're just, they got outcompeted.
So the other, the other question I have is, is how accessible is this property in terms of you gonna have to build access roads in to do that? Are you, are you gonna have to, you have to build access roads or you're gonna, and what, how difficult is it to access?
Yeah, I think, I think access is very simple. It's, it's off, you know, it's really well drained and it's, it's very good soils to be able to work on and access easily without having to do much.
You don't have to go through, you let them take it to a.
No, 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 no. It's a pretty, pretty straightforward access, um, which helps because it's a pretty small project. So that's helpful. So, you know, often, often, um, that type of, that type of harvest, um, can get people excited cause it's such a, it's such a disturb, well, any forestry or farming or agriculture is, is a disturbance. And if it's done, um, you know, where people have seen trees for a long time, sometimes it's, it's a tough, you know, it's a tough issue. And so I think it's important that, um, that it's clear of what we're doing and why and, and do what we've done before and, and totally be transparent and open to folk, especially on that road, to help them, you know, get excited about the forestry story. Cause it is, it's good stuff. It's just, you, you know, a lot of, what I've learned over all these years I've worked is, you know, we tend to, we tend to, um, be a bit frightened about things we don't know about. And so when we don't understand something, we often think, um, you know, it's bad. But once you, you know, you, you spend time with people and, and help them understand this is, this is the why, they're often relieved and not, not as like uninformed and reactionary with, um, being upset, so.
So having that, having that invitation to the public to come and have us look at the, what the power of cutting is doing from our Crescent will help.
Oh, yeah, it'd always, yeah, with.
Suggesting that's a possible thing.
Sure, yep, yeah, yep.
I also wanted to say the praises because you managed that pretty well. You, you won the weather prize.
Oh, man.
You got the, you got the job done pretty well and ended up in nice truss system there.
Yeah, great.
And I would just say the praises.
Yep, and that's a totally different forest, you know, than, than this one. So, you know, the, I guess, you know, just hypothetically, if we were to do something there, I'd probably invite, I like to do this with town, with town projects is typically invite, um, New Hampshire Cooperative Extension Wildlife Biologists, this particular one's Matt Tyer. And he could come and he could help, um, like support what we're doing there. So it's at least, it gives another level of objectivity and third party. And so a lot of, a lot of my town work with public resources, I often loop in that component because it just provides another, like, another objective sta, you know, um, feedback loop. So, um, it's free and, and, you know, creating a young forest, which is what we, like, would be my, my, um, my suggestion is to make a younger forest. And younger forests have a lot of, a lot of science of why it's important to do that. And all the benefits to doing that with careful and thoughtful science work, science-based treatment, so. So that's another thing that I would recommend. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah.
One of the comments that my colleague made was that of observing whether our approach is primarily financial or management or maybe a combination of both. And we obviously look to you for guidance on that. I suspect knowing us, it's, it's either a hybrid or, or stewardship than anything else. But we also wanna make people aware that there, there is a substantial deed restriction on the property. This isn't gonna lead to housing. Uh, the deed restriction is recreation only. So this would give an opportunity to create some trails that might not otherwise be there, as Jay mentioned, with, with the work you did last year.
Mm-hmm.
And also potentially a park type, type setting.
Sure.
It, it would be more in the management aspect.
Yep, that makes sense. I, I wasn't aware, I didn't look into the deeds, but that's helpful to understand. It's a deed restriction for.
Pretty specific.
Yeah, right. It does allow forestry and harvesting.
From that perspective, it does not allow for anything other than recreational, you, from a use perspective.
Gotcha.
But it encourages, uh, the harvesting aspect.
Oh, okay, great.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jeremy.
Sure, next steps?
Uh, would be for you to take, take further analysis of it and make a recommendation to us, as you mentioned, as to what you see as the best path forward. Then we would go with your guidance to the RFP process.
Okay. And who will be the point person for me?
Laurie.
Hmm?
Laurie Rodiola.
Yep, okay, great. All right, super.
Pleased to meet you, Jeremy.
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry, good to meet you back in the day when we brought you in from Mount Caesar.
Well, here we are, yeah.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome, yeah. My pleasure. Yeah, you got it. We have, uh, we have a faculty meeting. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good to see you, good to see you.
Yeah, we call this one for board.
I knew I would, I knew I'd walk.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. I had to do some stuff for me. He's a great guy.
Wendy Pelletier and the Mead Clan, welcome. How are you?
How are you?
Great, thanks.
I apologize, I didn't bring my display board, I didn't realize.
We have one.
Yep.
Our town planner would be happy to, or actually, our zoning board member would be happy to bring it out for you.
Is that what we're talking about, Phil?
Oh, hello.
Mead?
Yes.
Is this good, I'm here?
Hi, this is, um, another part, so I'm called Justin. This is, um, the plan we've been working on. So it's hired by, um, Jango and Curtis, um, to survey their boundaries. Um, they're on the corner of Day Road and Old Plankton Highway adjacent to the cemetery. And one of their concerns was where's the boundary line between their property and the cemetery? Um, so, and I'll let them cover it, but one of their prob, one of their concerns was some of the trees and who owned them. So in the process of our survey, um, doing research and looking at all the plans and then doing the field work, found that, uh, the plans from the eighties that Herb Russell had done, that there might have been, in my opinion, there's a, an oversight on his part of not locating those granite posts along the cemetery. But never mind. Okay, so this is one of the earliest one, I think, was done in eighty-two and this was done by Herb Russell. Um, I think of the original subdivision, so this is, um, where the Meads live. And then this is the line with the cemetery. Um, he did not locate any of the granite bounds, granite posts, which had been lived to as the boundary for the cemetery. Um, and he set pins along it. So what happened was we went out and located, we started, did the whole project. Um, we came all the way up to here, which is actually the third house up now, and found the pins up here. And as you can see, there's two lines drawn on my plan at the Meads' property. Um, it makes their property line six feet into the cemetery. They're holding this pin, which means they own some plots, um, which probably isn't really good.
Mr. and Mrs. Fish's plot.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And you're maintaining it.
Yeah. No, you're maintaining it. So there, there's one other thing. So it's been maintained to the granite posts. It's been lived to to the granite posts. Um, well, I would propose is that we do a boundary line agreement. Because it's been lived to that point, that there was probably, that there's an issue with the plan that created their property. Um, and that it really should leave the granite posts. Um, or else you're gonna have to move some people and I don't think that's a good thing.
It's surprising, I know when I looked, reviewed your, your proposal, it's surprising that the granite posts were ignored.
But they were?
That they were ignored when the subdivision was created.
And that all sort of areas were created. Especially back then, that was just before licensing, that's all I'm gonna say.
So.
So.
Yeah, something to add to it. So we, when we bought the house back, um, in the eighties, it had four and a half acres with it. Do you mind if I?
Yeah, we owned all, all of it.
Right, and it was a long piece. And, um, the day road was just a logging road. And we decided our toddler was getting older, we didn't wanna be on the main road anymore. So we were going to put our house on the market, which we did. And, um, it wasn't selling, we lost a buyer because the granddaughter came with the buyer. All set to put a contract on the house and freaked out because of the cemetery, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, um, so we ended up, Dawn Primrose approached us and said, um, to our realtor, who was Nancy Zeller at the time, I want their land, but I don't want their house. So we sold on three and a half acres. We kept, so we've got exactly an acre. And, um, we, um, did some clearing, cause we had two hundred pine trees in our backyard, some big, big ones right up against our house. So, um, we always thought that the cemetery line was the granite posts and the tree, right. So we never know, knew, you know, there was a discrepancy until our neighbor right behind us, Jim and Sandy Petrowski, they had their, um, their land surveyed. And Jim approached us after and said, you know, my surveyor found a discrepancy showing that your land goes out into the cemetery and it's not correct, um, what the previous surveyor, um, showed. So Jim said that there was a pin in the cemetery that actually showed the, the line going out into the cemetery. So Jim went out one day and he said that he approached one of the, it wasn't Lee, I don't know who it was, somebody was mowing and asked him about it and the guy said to Jim, oh, yeah, we removed that pin cause it was gonna wreck our mower beds. So.
That's why I didn't find it.
That's why the pin's no longer there.
Jim is your neighbor.
Yeah, like behind us, yeah. And, um, I don't know who he used.
I think he's given up on us.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
He tried, he tried to get this fixed, I guess, I don't know how, what it did.
He felt that if it was gonna get fixed, the entire neighborhood had to shift their properties. So it kinda got overwhelming and everybody just stopped talking to them.
That's a, that's a, bad advice.
Would it, this would affect everybody on that, in that area?
So our proposal is just for us, just, yeah. It does affect the next two lots up, but we're only here for you. Um, that would be up to the selectmen to take that up with the other ends.
Good, so.
To tell you the truth, we've surveyed it all, it will be easy enough to do if you wanted to, to fill that route in the future. But we're here for the Meads' only.
For the, uh, big lots, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, so where, where the fish, um, headstone is, is the one in question. And Mr. Fish was buried in nineteen sixty and the wife was buried in like nineteen seventy. So the town buried them in that plot in the sixties and the nineties. That's the, right, the fish, um. I didn't write down any dates, I did locate them and they are shown, um, especially right here. Um, I know the scale's not very good, but, um, the line is, there's six feet of difference right here. And this goes just right, well, this is one of the sheds, goes right along the backside of that shed.
So what, what's sparking us to, to get it changed is, A, I really wanted to find out who really owned the trees because they're getting really dangerous. And now that we know they're on our property, Kirk's already gotten an estimate or two on what it would cost to start taking down some pines. Um, but, um, if we, we have no intentions of selling our house, cause we love it there and our daughter bought Joyce St. Laurent's house right down the street. So, um, if we ever sell that, um, we love living next to a cemetery cause it's peaceful, but I think some, it would be a deterrent for somebody to find out that there is a grave on their, in their yard. I just, I think some people just.
I think the law serves right, I think we have a point there.
Sure. Adam, did you have a question? Oh.
He wouldn't want to agree on this.
Does this make them, does this, is this significant enough for them to lose, uh, the one acre? Or is it just a de minimis amount?
I think we're exactly, it's point nine-nine.
Current?
No, um, if we hold that, with that adjustment.
So it's just, it's immaterial then?
Right, yeah.
So we wouldn't have to do like a variance of having a little under an acre or anything like that?
Well, that would depend upon the gentleman behind you, but at point nine-nine, hopefully.
Right, and actually there's the granite posts, there've been photos, but there is a granite post right at the corner. We wouldn't have to set a pin in, um, there's already a post there, and there's right on.
Look, can you, I'm a little confused on your, your question about the trees. You are unsure of who owned what trees. So are these trees we're talking about on, in between the two lines?
All of the trees that go all the way up our property, it looks like a line.
They're ready with granite posts.
And some of them are.
Yeah, but by removing this line closer to you, that means the trees are gonna be on our property.
Not, not necessarily, because they're not in a straight line. There's some, they're in different.
Oh, I see.
So.
Wouldn't it be in our best interest for to try to solve the whole problem?
But not tonight.
Not tonight.
Is it definitely only one grave site?
No, there were three.
Right?
There were three?
Um, in your area. I didn't locate them up on the other properties, but there were three that were over.
So the other question that I have is, um, who ends up paying for the boundary line adjustment? Cause it's gonna be like over a thousand dollars, from what we understand, um.
Well, we've, we've already voted to approve the invoice that was submitted, or estimate that was submitted by Cardinal. We, we just, we wanted to have this meeting to have a clearer understanding of what was being proposed.
We would adopt Mr. and Mrs. Fish, but I don't have time anymore. I'm too busy. You know, I didn't.
They're pretty low maintenance. Um, I would suggest, is Gary Kenyon still your town attorney?
No, we use up in Anfield.
Okay, I would suggest bringing this to them to make sure I'm correct on that it can, can be a boundary line agreement. I don't believe we need to go to the planning board. Because there's been an error, I think it is an agreement, it's always been, but I would clear that up with them. And they would write this.
Laurie will, actually, for this, we would use a different attorney, but Laurie will reach out to him.
Okay.
Tomorrow, Friday. She's got a pretty, pretty heavy plate right now, but within the next few days.
Okay.
Do you have to, um, do you, is it protocol to alert our butters that there's going to be a boundary line? I'm just wondering, cause nobody said any, we talk to them all the time and nobody said anything like, oh, I got a letter from the town.
Well, we'll find out from the attorney. Uh, the suggestion from the gentleman behind you is yes, that's the answer. But obviously, there's, there's quite a few butters if, if, if the town has to notify a butters cause we have everybody across the street. But it really doesn't pertain to anyone but you and the town.
Right.
And potentially the people behind you.
An agreement is just a legal matter, you know, so, um.
I can't imagine anybody would have an issue with it, I mean.
I think it would be, now that it's been brought to light.
You think the fish's head?
What's that?
You think the fish's head?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it'll stop turning, who knows? But it does clear it up if a title issue were to come up for some reason.
Well, yeah, you know, now that, all it takes is one person trying to sell their house and they're required to survey it and then, then you're stuck in there, you're under pressure, so.
We have a couple of realtors in Lions Club and I was talking to one of them one day after luncheon and I just kinda mentioned it and he said, um, that it would really be a good idea to get it cleared up legally and make sure everything's correct, um, if we were to sell our house. And we would obviously have to divulge that information, um, so.
Yep. Well, I think we're, we're in agreement with you, it's just getting there. Is there anything specific that you would look, Laurie, to request of the, of town council other than what you've already presented?
No, just to make sure that it, it, my advice is correct about the boundary line agreement. I think it is, um.
And not needing to go to planning board?
Right.
So do we not need that pin, um, that was removed years ago? Or should we just, you don't need it, right?
Sounds like, yeah.
My proposal is to use the granite post that's right there and we'll put a paint spot or something on the top so everybody knows which post it is.
Okay. And there's, our plan is, um, there's a lot of branches, those trees are so old. And there's a, we're trying to, I usually take many trips to the dump just cause it drives me nuts with all the stuff that falls down. But you've got estimates, right?
Yeah.
So, and that's, the trees we now know are on our property, so we're taking care of what we can now. And then it was like ten grand, ten thousand dollars. We're taking care of what we can now and then, it was like ten grand, ten thousand dollars only for like, how many trees, like?
Six or seven.
Yeah.
Amazing how it adds up.
Six or three trees, so-
It's expensive.
This is really varied, you got to know it all.
Yeah.
You have any questions?
No.
Anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pleasure to see you all today.
Laurie, if you need a PDF or anything to send me, I can-
Thank you, JoJo.
Thank you so much.
I can send you that, thank you so much.
All right, next item on the agenda is our phone system proposal. Ms. Raviola.
Here, it's a tale of a lifetime.
As you know, we have no phone system, uh, still, a week later. So, I emailed you guys my proposal. Email you all the proposals, you saw it.
We gotta tilt it toward you. Okay. Somebody just texted us and said they can't hear you. They just texted me a bill and said they can't hear you speak. We're sorry, we're sorry, Laurie, you can speak louder.
Here we go, we have two proposals before you, which they were all emailed to you.
Yeah.
And, um, I sent you a memo later this afternoon, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it or not, but, um, it's my recommendation to go with the, um, Sangoma proposal in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars. Um, originally, I had wanted to accept the first proposal, but then Jimmy and I had a conversation with Alan, our IT rep, and, um, he explained the whole, um, SIP trunk system and, um, we decided it would be best to just kinda let that stay where it is, since it's kind of an emergency and we need a phone system, it's already been a week. Um, so we really wanna just not mess with that and just be able to come in and, and have a system that, um-
Are you all aware of what happened to our phone system? Okay. All right, you definitely would be aware.
Um, it's Sangoma, I'll give you this after, so, um, so anyway, well, like I originally, like I said, I originally wanted to accept the first proposal because that included the monthly fee. I think we could've saved some money by eliminating some of our windows now by going with that first proposal. And, let's see here, but if you, to get the phone system back up and running as quickly, quickly as possible, this would be the best, um, best way to go now, just to keep things clear while we're doing, they're coming in and implementing, uh, the new system. Uh, the system will get the town up and running with a company that has over forty years in business as soon as possible, hopefully by the end of the week. If we approve something this evening. Um, later, when we have time and the funding, we can upgrade, um, the trunk system and move to Sangoma's monthly fee plan, which would save us money in the monthly and in the long term. We will gain ownership of our system and be able to manage it from our own portal, just logging in, we can change things right through the portal. Um, and be able to offer the employees unmatched flexibility for work out of the office and seamless scalability with no recurring license fees per features. Um, as stated in their proposal, which you all have in front of you, the Switchbox on-prem by Sangoma is the smarter, all-in-one UC solution that gives us total control without the complexity or hidden costs. Everything's laid out right there, with all the features included, included for voice, video chat, the IV, IVR call queues, reporting, CRM integrations, and more. Switchbox delivers enterprise-grade communications in one powerful, easy-to-manage platform. And it has the ability to grow as our town grows. If we go through renovations, I know the board has been talking about that, um, that you plug them in, like, you can take the phone literally and go sit at home with the phone, just plug it into the wall. So, it's all brand-new upgrade, um, which the system was pretty antiquated there, so that is my recommendation, I know-
What is the monthly service and which package do we end up with?
So, with this quote, because of keeping the SIP trunk system in place, there's no monthly fee. Like, this is just for the phones, we'll keep our same, um, the, I think it was TCE, which is their proposal- Yeah, TCE, um, that invoice, we're still gonna be paying them three hundred and something dollars a month, even if we stay with this, um, Sangoma. But I think in the future, it would be smart of us to, you know, like you said, once we're stable and we're up and running, they can come in and give us a proposal
Right.
for everything and then we can work on upgrading all of the, the lines, per se. Well, we're not talking about lines, that was the email Alan made it clear.
Right.
Um, so, it, you know, and it would be no problem for, for, um, the Vencom team to do that, or Sangoma is the, that's through Vencom. Uh, it'd be no problem for them to do that, it's just to get us back up and running soon. This would be the best way to start and it's, it'll be clean. And then we can go in and get a proposal to switch everything else out, see how much money we're, because we would go to a user-based system, then if we did that, um, we could compare what we're paying now versus if we up, um, upgrade and, and switch everything over to them. But there's no rush to do that, we can take our time and-
So, with TCE, their proposal, which was five hundred a month, our actual would be three hundred and change?
Say that again?
The TCE proposal was five hundred a month, but if we, if we went with your, your recommendation, their fee, TCEs would be three hundred?
It would stay the same at three hundred, which is what we've been paying right along.
And so, the only, the only fee to, uh, Sangoma is the seven thousand, or say eight thousand?
Correct, yeah.
Behind the phone system.
Yeah, exactly.
And we own it.
This looks, I'm assuming if we went with the TCE proposal, this five hundred dollars is the new monthly. So, it'd be an increased monthly fee. Um, and the other quote, if you recall, I think it was like about three forty-two or something for the monthly, if we were to not use the SIP trunk and go that route, so I saw savings right there, um, just in that, but, you know, eventually we can get there. But I think this is, we need a phone system, it's been a week and it's pretty frustrating.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mark?
I got none.
Jim? And the funding will come from, and then will be reimbursed by Primax?
Yep, this will be reimbursed, um, through, through Primax. We've already had the insurance adjusters out, um, and we're submitting all the quotes to them. So, we have the radio downstairs and I am gonna have the electricians and stuff come out and just make sure everything is set.
So, we would prepay and be reimbursed?
Mm-hmm.
And that will come from?
Primax.
I'm sorry, the, the funding, the initial payment will come from, we pull it from InvestNH, it's infrastructure.
We can do that.
And then we can reimburse.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay.
So, that's the, and it's the, the money that we got, okay.
Unless you think there's money in the budget somewhere.
Well, that would be up to you, young lady.
I can find out.
I know, I know we can get it from InvestNH without.
Yeah, right.
And then just put it back in there.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay. Do you have a, you have a motion prepared?
Um, no, but if, if you wanna use the top part of the memo, it's right there, accept the proposal from Sangoma with the quote number and the amount of seven thousand, seven thousand, six eighty-three and forty-nine cents.
I make a motion to accept the Sangoma phone proposal, quote number seven eight one one zero, in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. To come out of. Invest, no matter.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, Laurie.
Good work on that, Laurie.
It's good work on that, that was a lot.
Adam, you may get a phone in the next week or two.
You can take it home with you, too.
Put it in your car, you plug it into your dad's toilet.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a review of the elderly exemption qualification limits. Did you have opportunity to determine when, when we voted these limits in?
You know what, I believe-
Can we push this off till it-
Table, absolutely.
Because this is something that we're gonna-
Just, just know that it's coming and I think that you should have a discussion. Um, I know some towns have even established a committee, since they don't have a board of assessors, it's the selectmen in our case. It's totally up to you guys.
What I'd be interested in when we do have the discussion is an explanation of Ringe's values, which is substantially higher than any, most anybody else's.
I, I can speak to that, um, as I was there, obviously, but I did get a recommendation from the town's, Ringe's assessing firm, Avatar, that they should be increased, they should look at increasing them, because that's how, I mean, people are hurting, you know, and it, it's been quite a while. I know theirs are high, but, uh, everybody else, I think, is in the same boat, it's been many, probably ten years or so since those rates have been, those income limits have been adjusted. So, I think, you know, they were, they were recommended when I was there, that they should be increasing them from that.
Which is substantial, higher than-
It's quite substantial.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Uh, cable franchise renewal, did you have opportunity to get answers to the questions that we submitted?
I did not.
Well, um, we okay to push this off another two weeks?
We can do that, it's pretty much a standard, um, straightforward template and I think, I believe, I went through it in Ringe as well, they bought out, um, charge or Spectrum, whatever, it's the same company that bought out and our contract hasn't been renewed, I think, since two thousand eighteen. But by law, they have to have that in place or they can't service us. So, she's been like, trying to get me to get it.
Well, we're seven years behind.
We're, we're a little bit behind, but I think you could wait a couple more weeks.
Can you just creep in there, is that the cable, the money we get from the cable for?
That's part of it, but it, it's the contract itself.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, just, just shoot me an email, I can-
Is it similar to like how I did that contract with Spectrum and I get money? Is it similar to that?
Yep.
Hmm.
It should be.
Okay.
I haven't seen your contract, but-
All right, I understand it, but I understand it, okay.
Yes. By the way, Michael, we're going to Richardson Park on September, we're going to Richardson Park on September third.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we're gonna go out on tour for the first time.
Bring, bring your bathing suits?
You could, you could.
We're gonna, we're all gonna sit in the water and have our meeting.
Right on the beach.
Uh, next item on our agenda is a discussion about the usage of town vehicles. I'm not, I wasn't a part of this, so I'm not sure where this is coming from.
I think Mark should head that up.
So, it, it came about that I was told by, uh, the deputy fire chief, or assistant fire chief, that two of the, the deputy and the assistant fire chief were both taking vehicles home and they were assigned to them. And reading over the policy, it appears that they shouldn't be doing that, the only people that are allowed to take home vehicles are the department, that's all the fire chief, town highway director, and the police chief. Uh, same with the police department, there's a stipulation in there where the, if officers are going to training, they can take home vehicles. And I don't know if you guys, prior to this, because apparently the police department's been doing this for a while, where officers are going off duty but are coming back the next day or taking vehicles home. My concern being that, um, the liability if someone's taking a cruiser out of town, what liability the town has as far as they're not on duty anymore, or if they are, then they're not in town when they're supposed to be on duty.
On the, on the police department, I think, and if I'm not mistaken, that Joe has authority to let his officers take the vehicle home on short shifts, I'm pretty sure about that, if you look that.
And then that could've been something the judge did before, but the, the current town policy doesn't say that.
Really?
Yeah, because that's what the department has.
We could, we could research it a little bit and I could, um, see if Joe has, he, he could have different policies.
Well, he did come to me and Bill, and we talked about a bill that when somebody was on a shift, like a twelve-hour shift, and he was gonna come back, he asked us, and we did give him permission about-
For that.
For that, to be able to let the officer take him home.
But I don't know that that's what Mark's referring to.
Well, it, it kind of is, because I think that,
Yeah.
you know, the officers aren't just taking them home like every day, like if they wanna go off duty for the next three days or whatever, they're not, they're leaving at the station.
They leave them at the station.
Again, my concern, I don't have an issue really with the officers that are living in town taking a cruiser home, but, you know, there's at least three officers that I know of that live out of town, and what liability does the town, if they're off duty and they're driving a town vehicle, are they covered? Uh, more for, for us and for them, that's my concern.
Well, Laurie, I'll look into it more, and we, we have department head meetings coming up. And when they, when they come in front of us, we can, we could let them know that that's a discussion.
Yeah, but let's not let it go right here, Eric, um, don't you, do you feel that we're all on the same page? Do you think he should've came in front of us and said that he was gonna allow the other two guys to take it home?
I think we should let him come and talk with us.
Good, good enough.
All right, last shot at public input, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Come on, give us something.
What have you got?
I'm eating a bag of chocolate.
I'm just looking forward tomorrow night, starting the, uh, the coverage, uh, I sent Ann some, uh, material already.
Great, tomorrow night? How can it start without us talking about it? The, the committee?
Oh, yeah, they-
Yeah, but I thought we were gonna meet with them in the first meeting and we were gonna discuss what we wanted, am I-
Don't, don't you guys all have to be here?
No.
Well, actually, according to the email that Ann sent out, except we were gonna be there.
I thought so.
Okay.
But Laurie can't be here, so.
But you can be here.
But it's, uh, it's, it is exciting to see it get started.
We still haven't got Jimmy to write to Andy yet either.
No, but so I'm a little confused, I thought we were, we were gonna all meet and we were gonna discuss what we were hoping that they could accomplish, so do you, what are you going after then? What is this all about?
That's what we're gonna do.
Well, you are gonna do it, without me in mind?
No, I'm on the committee and you're gonna be there tomorrow at six o'clock.
I just can't believe it.
I didn't know this, neither, who, did I get an email?
Did you check your email?
Who sent it to me, you?
You've been a little busy, Jimmy.
Okay.
We'll come to the meeting tomorrow.
Four, four, four P M?
Six.
Six.
Six P M.
I didn't get that.
Yes, you did, I'm still glad you did.
You sent me something.
All right, then we're, uh, we've got a few non-publics.
No, Ian sent it.
You all set, Michael?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming.
See you tomorrow.
But we, uh-
Oh, wait, I have administrative updates.
Oh, Michael, I guess we have an administrative update, I overlooked that, we, we-
Sit back down, it's important.
That's right, that's right.
Sit back down, and I'll see.
Sit, boy, sit.
You're gonna come to a meeting, you're gonna finish this, boy.
Just a few things, so, uh, Joe had asked me to, there were a few emails back and forth, um, they're going to be, um, stopping the flow at the, on Swansea Lake for the, um, for the dam, I'll just read what I kinda copied and pasted it from the email. Um, they've already talked with the Swansea Lake Protection Association, um, so, says that any New Hampshire DES in-stream flow program has requested permission from the town of Swansea to conduct a brief flow test at the Swansea Lake Dam. The flow test is proposed to support the development of a watershed-wide water management plan, that was a lot, for designated Ashlot River
Yeah.
under RSA four eighty-three colon nine dash C, um, and they are conducting similar tests at, um, over a dozen dams across, uh, the Ashlot River watershed this summer, um, for the same purpose. And, and they said typically there's no discernible change in the water level, um, and it shouldn't take more than two hours to do. But just so everybody's aware, and if it, if they see a drop in it, it, it's okay. So, just making them know about that. Um, we're still working on a couple of agreements, the pilot agreement for, that's gone to Cordell for the, um, East Coast Conference or Pilgrim Pines.
Hmm.
That agreement was signed earlier this spring, but we found out that it actually was supposed to be a pilot program, so Cordell's just, um- Cordell's just, um, we sent that off to him, he's working on that, should have that by next week. Um, and I met with the City of Keene, or a couple of people from the City of Keene today, the deputy um, manager and deputy county manager and two deputy county managers and I forget the other one's name, but um regarding the um.
Airport manager.
Airport manager, hiring of the new airport manager, so we're scheduling some interviews for the applicants and I was grateful to be asked to join in that.
You're on that?
Just the committee, the hiring committee.
They called you, I was scheduled, when I asked you to be on?
Well, because it's in Swansea, so they figured it would be a good, you know, community relation.
Is the old airport manager retiring?
Mm-hmm, October first, or thirty-first.
Oh, that's interesting, good for you.
So, yeah, so that was good, I think that's all I got.
Now you can go, Mike.
One more, Michael.
No, I'm.
Oh, good, thank you for coming, um, we're gonna go in under legal.
Uh, legal or, okay, so E first? We're going under E first, sorry Sue, I, we, we have three for C, but yeah.
Okay, so we, the motion is to go in under E for legal? Mr. T?
I'll second that.
Woker, Tempesta.
May.
Hot Woker, Laval.
May.
All right, we're off.